A regular city council meeting for Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please join me for a moment of meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance to the American flag. You will hear three taps of the gavel when it is time to stand. Please join me in a moment of meditation now.
(inaudible)
Clerk of Council, Mrs. Amy Skank, please call the attendance roll.
President.
This is Carter. Present. Mr. West?
Here.
Mr. Horn?
Here.
Mayor Slankka?
Here. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizen comments. A professional presentation free of foul language is expected. This is not the time for debate, questions and answer, or any back and forth conversation. This is a time for you, our residents, to be able to present in front of council on record uninterrupted and have the floor. We have received twelve comment cards this evening. We will have one hour for this citizen comments. I will prompt each speaker for their next steps when they reach the podium. I would like to first call Mrs. Norvell Hughley to the podium. Ms. Norvell, there we are. Thank you. You may stand or sit according to your preference, whichever one you prefer. And then, absolutely, please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into it as you speak at all times. And Mrs. Skank is going to make sure it's working for you. Thank you. Before we begin, please state your full name and your Middletown residence or work address for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
This is Norvell Hughley, seven oh two.
Oh, okay. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. Can you speak? What, she said it's on, the microphone is on? Are you picking her up? Just need to speak more into the microphone?
Norvell Hughley, seven oh two Fourteenth Avenue, Middletown, Ohio. Good afternoon and thank you for this opportunity to come before you. During a certain time in Middletown history, there was a sign as you entered from I seventy-five that said, "Bright past, brighter future." And during that time period, that sign was really true to Middletown. Middletown was nice and clean. It was safe. But over the years, it has deteriorated. And now, the streets are not safe anymore. It's not as clean as it used to be. Back in the day, when I came to Middletown and I drove through different areas of the city, it was just so clean and so pleasant to be a citizen of Middletown. But all this changed over the years, okay? We had homeowners who kept their yards clean, okay? Their front and backyards were clean. You couldn't find a piece of paper on the street or in the yards. And then the parents were there to make sure that they didn't throw paper on the streets, okay? But it's a different time period now in our community, especially in the Douglas area. And days gone by, those homeowners, they kept up the yards. They was clean. Picnic and picnics and family gathering were in the backyard. Equipment such as grills, swimming pools are located in the backyard. Now, the grills, the bouncy houses, and other stuff is in the front yard. So we got junk, junk, garbage, garbage has taken over the front yards. People are even parking their cars in the front yards. People are not cleaning up their place of residence, okay? What can be done to correct these problems that we're facing in the Douglas Park community and probably other communities? Are there any laws on the books to get these people to clean up their yards? Are there any fines that can be directed towards the tenants to clean up the yards? Okay, when the original owner left and went to heaven, they left the care of their houses in the care of their family member, okay? And I guess after missing so many payments or whatever, the property eventually landed in the hands of those with the money to purchase the property. The landlords came around after the tenants had wrecked the property and they spent about, grabbing a number out of the air, two thousand dollars to get the place livable. And before you can turn around, a new tenant is moving in, bringing all their trash, outside barking dogs or dogs, and non-caring community habits. All the tenants want is a place to live with no care about their surroundings. City council, can we, or we can and must do something to get people to clean up their properties, okay? Landlords need to do a better job of screening, checking references, talking to other landlords, talking to their next-door neighbors about things before they rent out their houses. We notice all they care about is the rent money. They never visit the property or see if their property is being kept up or cleaned. I would like to work with those landlords in getting them to become a necessary-
Ms. Hughley? Thank you. That's time, that's four minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you have that in your computer, maybe you can email that to us as well so we can have that in its entirety. Thank you. Next, I would like to call Barry Moore, Barry Moore, to the podium. Doing well? Please do adjust the microphone and speak into it at all times before we begin. And before we begin, you're going to please state your full name and Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please begin.
All right. I live at eleven oh five Hughes Street, Middletown. I'm a Middletown resident. I've been here seventy years.
Could you verify your name, please? And just verify your name one more time.
My name? Barry Lee Moore.
Perfect. Thank you. Please begin.
You're welcome. This is Stefan Gabriel Moore, my son, and Tiffy Meredith Moore, my wife. I am very disappointed in this city. I have a police report where this sergeant, Wagers, attended just a few weeks ago. And when he showed up to the scene, he told the police officers there that they could not arrest a man who threatened to kill me, my son, my wife, my daughter, and my dog on my front porch. I have video surveillance. I have five cameras. I showed it to two of the police officers, not Sergeant Wagers, he wasn't, he didn't see the video. The other two did. And he said, Sergeant Wagers said, that he did not, that the police officer did not hear the man threaten us, so they cannot arrest him. According to the Ohio Revice Code, which I have in my hand, it does not say that they have to hear that. It says if we feel that our lives is threatened, that we are going to die, that the police officer can arrest him for aggravated menacing because he threatened with a gun. Is the city going to arrest this man? Or are we going to wait till my son gets killed riding his bike down the street where this man comes up and shoots him? Because this is an ongoing problem. We have ten police reports where this man has bothered our family. We did nothing to this man. I don't even know his name. I didn't know his name until we got the police reports, which was two days ago. I know where he lives because I see where he comes from, but I never knew his name. I've even called his landlord out of state to try to get him evicted. They can't evict him because he never said on any police report that he lived at the address on Hughes. He lives down the street from us, that he lives in Hamilton. He doesn't live in Hamilton. He stays at the house on Hughes Street. My son is terrified to go outside and play. I didn't bring my daughter because she started crying before we ever got here and said she didn't want to come because she was scared. She was afraid that the police would not do their job, is what my ten-year-old daughter said. I've asked my son if he would speak and tell the city council and the police chief and sergeant who work for the police department how he used to feel about the police. You have one police officer in this city that my son admires. His name is Lieutenant Gibson. He works in the jail to my best knowledge. I don't know exactly where he works here in the city. I just know that he's still here. My son worships the ground that man walks on. Up until this happened, where nobody wants to arrest somebody for threatening to kill him, he says he don't want to be a police officer, he don't want to live in the city of Middletown. He says the city of Middletown sucks. That's his words, quote unquote. Now, is there anything that you, council members, can do to have this man arrested? To direct the police chief to have somebody arrest this man? Because I can, I can give you the paperwork. I can, if you want to read it, Mr. Lally, sir?
Yep.
You know the, you know the rules? You know what aggravated menacing and menacing is? According to the Ohio Revice Code?
Actually, at this time, you can speak, there's no back and forth at this time, but I'm writing down what you're saying, and I know our city manager is as well. So if you want to continue, you still have fifty seconds left.
Well, I want something done today. I still have fifty seconds. Can somebody give me an answer?
Well, if you are, are you complete? Are you complete?
Yeah, I'm done.
Here, Stefan, state your name.
You have it at twenty.
Your first name. Say your first name and your last name.
Stefan Moore.
Where do you live?
Eleven oh five Hughes.
Now, explain to them how you feel about the police and how they're doing or not doing their job.
You do it, son. Come on, pray. He's special needs.
Can you do it? Okay. You can go back to our stuff, okay?
Thank you. We're actually done with time, however.
I'm just collecting our paperwork.
Yeah. However, our city manager, right behind you, Mrs. Ashley Combs, was there something that we can do to connect with them, like immediately?
Yes, I'm sure the police chief is here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Margaret L. Martin. Margaret L. Martin? Oh, are you Ms. Martin?
No.
Oh, okay, got you. All right, thank you. So Ms. Martin, please do, you may sit or stand according to your preference and do adjust the microphone and speak into it at all times. And before you begin, please state your full name and your address, Middletown address for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
My name is Margaret L. Martin. I reside at seven one five Seventeenth Avenue, Middletown, Ohio, four five oh four four, which is located in the south end of Middletown. My frustration this evening is I would like to know if someone could let me know the timeframe of the nuisance sound ordinance. I would be very appreciative of that. We had an incident July the fourth that lasted twelve and a half hours. We have older senior citizens, such as my husband, he's eighty-four. There's another lady, I think she's eighty-two. And we have to be in the mix of all this loud noise for twelve hours. Now, my point is, they leave from my house, go and destroy our church property, which is at seven nineteen Eighteenth Avenue. I'm not very happy about that. That's where we worship. So, the noise ordinance, if it's a cutoff time, can we have somebody check? Can somebody just police the area? I would be very grateful if that would happen. However, we did speak with the police chief on July the second, and we left feeling pretty much comfortable about the situation that was going to take place on the fourth. But that didn't happen. I called three times and they were busy. And I understand trauma is more important. And I was told something did take place that evening that was very, very serious. However, I finally got results at ten minutes till three in the morning. That's a long night. And I don't think it's fair, that they can come down there with four-wheelers and disturb the peace. And I am pretty sure that that kind of activity and behavior does not take place on the east end of town. And if I'm wrong, I stand to be corrected. But for them to destroy what we're trying to build is very, very unnecessary, and I don't appreciate it at all. So, council members, if we can get together to figure out a solution, because yes, it was a holiday, everybody's free to do whatever they want because it is a holiday. However, the respect for people has gone. I respect people, and I expect people to respect me. But to keep me up, that's ridiculous. And they, there, there wasn't like ten people, we're talking at least fifteen hundred people. Fifteen hundred, which took place from Seventeenth all the way down to the community center. It was all night. Very unbearable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Next, I would like to call Ms. Marva Gaston to the podium. And please sit or stand according to your preference, and please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. And before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please do commence.
Yes, my name is Marva Gaston. I reside at nine thirteen Sixth Avenue here in Middletown. Once again, I come to express my deep concerns about the debris left behind from the demolition of the Middletown Paperboard Company, previously located along Verity Parkway. According to an article in the Journal News written by Rick McCrab dated January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, then-city manager Paul Lally announced that the city received three million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act grant received from the Butler County Commissioners to demolish the site, of which only two-point-seven of those funds was contracted for the job. The article stated it was to be used for demolition, removal, and disposal. Why was this material not removed? Sounds as if it should have been part of the contract, but seeing as to how it was not removed, I can't help but wonder if we are looking at an example of misappropriation of funds. I request a copy of the contract. The residents that live in the area, as well as the city as a whole, deserve to hear the truth, the whole truth, without all the tap dancing around the subject. You deserve, you yourselves started out describing this as an emergency situation, but as time has gone on, you are downplaying the seriousness of the matter and dragging it out and avoiding direct questions and ultimately doing nothing to protect the health of citizens living and working in the vicinity of this material. The day after the last council meeting, I finally had a meeting with city representatives to discuss this matter. Unfortunately, nothing said pleased me as far as reaching a resolution in this matter as nothing mentioned had anything to do with removal of the material other than the material to be used towards the road repair near the airport. Outside of that usage, the timeframe continues to slip for the project to start, which means the residents will have to continue to be subjected to the environmental dangers of breathing increased contaminated dust since the mound has been leveled and no longer crusted as it was before. We have not received enough rain for it to have crusted to the point that it was prior to leveling, and it, and it and no other preventive measures have been taken. The suggestion to build a new fence around the area is a waste of taxpayer money. There is only the main entry point that I complained about that needed, needed attention aside from being placed, aside from maybe placing more barbed wire around the whole thing to deter intruders, mainly children, from climbing the fence and playing in the mound. While you're willing to spend funds on, on foolishness like a fence, please just move the mound. Admit you made a mistake, correct it by moving it, protect the lives of the residents living and working in the area, and let's move on. I can respect that. I would love for this site to be as pleasing to the eye as the previous site of the Vale Middle School. It's leveled with grass and a pleasing sight to see, while we are left with dust, dirt, weeds, and an unsightly mess. Again, I ask that the city do the right thing in this matter and move the mound and protect the people of this city. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gaston. Next, I would like to call Kimberly Silas, Ms. Silas, to the podium. And please do sit or stand according to your preference, and please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please do state your full name and Middletown residence or work address for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Hi, I am Kimberly Silas. I do reside in Middletown, Ohio, at one twenty-one K Drive. Thank you for this afternoon. So I have been a resident of this city for sixty-five years, and I have been a member of the United Missionary Baptist Church for fifty-five-plus years. It was absolutely appalling to see the debris left behind on the church property from the residents at seven eighteen Seventeenth Avenue. These individuals don't care about our church, nor do they care about our church's property. This seems to be an ongoing problem. The parking lot is not for partygoers, excuse me, the parking lot is not a parking lot for partygoers, nor is it a playground for their children. Members seventy-plus years of age cleaning up this mess, the mess that was left behind from the Fourth of July activities. Where some of my frustration comes in, the city of Middletown police seem to be in the midst, and when I mean in the midst, not partying with the individuals, but in the area, you know, riding by, and they see this activity going on. So that's what I mean by in the midst. This situation needs, but this seems like they turned a blind eye. But this situation needs to be addressed sooner than later. This is an ongoing, this has been an ongoing situation, and you would not want this activity in your neighborhood, in your backyard, and we certainly don't want it in ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silas. Next, I would like to call Gabe Shanline to the podium. And you may sit or stand according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Gabe Shanline, one twenty-one South Main Street. Good evening, Mayor Slankka and City Council. I'm here to provide an update on the new downtown Middletown RFQ effort involving multiple city-owned signature downtown historic buildings. After receiving input in two highly productive working sessions with citizens and stakeholders, the city's community and economic development department is drafting a new RFQ to solicit developers for projects involving the aforementioned buildings. My understanding is that when the city finishes this draft, it will hold one or two more working sessions to finalize it. Yesterday, Mayor Slankka and I requested a status update and next steps from Lisha Morland and Ashley Combs, in part to confirm this understanding is correct, and I'm awaiting their reply. It's only been one day, so no worries on that. And Lisha, I embarrassingly walked my wife out to the car last meeting and got locked out of your presentation, so my apologies. I'll watch the video. In the past couple of weeks and over the next couple of weeks, members of the Save Downtown Middletown Coalition are attending workshops about downtown development and historic restoration, one given by Heritage Ohio, for example. Our members have also reached out to local developers to inform them of the upcoming RFQ and receive their advice. I am continuing to communicate with city council members to ensure I understand your positions and expectations for this new RFQ effort. I also reached out to Josh Smith, president of the Butler County Finance Authority and a driving force behind successful projects that are, in Hamilton, that are similar to ours, and requested a meeting to get his advice on what we can do in Middletown to increase this RFQ's likelihood of success. All of this information will inform our effort and strengthen the new RFQ. If I learn anything related to this council's role in directing these efforts, for example, issues of public funding or reasonable timelines, I hope to share it with you all, and I hope you will be open-minded and flexible so as to take full advantage of any knowledge gained. As I said two weeks ago, I'm extremely encouraged by the enthusiasm and progress I've seen so far and by the opportunity we all have before us. I thank this council for getting the ball rolling on this effort, for your time and willingness to work with us, and for your open-mindedness now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shanline. Next, I would like to call Ms. Jade Smarda to the podium. And you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. And before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Jade Smarda, one two one South Main Street. My remarks tonight will be fairly brief. I just wanted to say that I'm pleased that council will pause decision-making on demolition of the Manchester and other buildings until after the RFQ process plays out. Many citizens, including myself, are eager to keep working with city staff on the RFQ and are looking forward to hearing from staff on when our next working group session will be. My hope is that we can release an excellent RFQ that not only highlights the subject properties, but also shows developers photos of the surrounding areas, the Sorg Opera House, the Historic Districts, Smith Park, the Riverside, bike trails, businesses like Triple Moon, attractive event venues like the Windermere, to name just a few. We should also be including metrics on visitors to Smith Park, the Sorg, the Windermere, et cetera. In short, we need developers to see in this- After receiving input in two highly productive working sessions with citizens and stakeholders, the city's Community and Economic Development Department is drafting a new RFQ to solicit developers for projects involving the aforementioned buildings. My understanding is that when the city finishes this draft, it will hold one or two more working sessions to finalize it. Yesterday, Mayor Slank and I requested a status update and next steps from Lisha Morland and Ashley Combs, in part to confirm this understanding is correct, and I'm awaiting their reply. It's only been one day, so no worries on that. And Lisha, I embarrassingly walked my wife out to the car last meeting and got locked out of your presentation, so my apologies. I'll watch the video. In the past couple of weeks and over the next couple of weeks, members of the Save Downtown Middletown Coalition are attending workshops about downtown development and historic restoration, one given by Heritage Ohio, for example. Our members have also reached out to local developers to inform them of the upcoming RFQ and receive their advice. I am continuing to communicate with city council members to ensure I understand your positions and expectations for this new RFQ effort. I also reached out to Josh Smith, President of the Butler County Finance Authority and a driving force behind successful projects that are in Hamilton that are similar to ours, and requested a meeting to get his advice on what we can do in Middletown to increase this RFQ's likelihood of success. All of this information will inform our effort and strengthen the new RFQ. If I learn anything related to this council's role in directing these efforts, for example, issues of public funding or reasonable timelines, I hope to share it with you all, and I hope you will be open-minded and flexible so as to take full advantage of any knowledge gained. As I said two weeks ago, I'm extremely encouraged by the enthusiasm and progress I've seen so far and by the opportunity we all have before us. I thank this council for getting the ball rolling on this effort, for your time and willingness to work with us, and for your open-mindedness now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shanline. Next, I would like to call Ms. Jade Smarda to the podium, and you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. And before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Jade Smarda, 121 South Main Street. My remarks tonight will be fairly brief. I just wanted to say that I'm pleased that council will pause decision-making on demolition of the Manchester and other buildings until after the RFQ process plays out. Many citizens, including myself, are eager to keep working with city staff on the RFQ and are looking forward to hearing from staff on when our next working group session will be. My hope is that we can release an excellent RFQ that not only highlights the subject properties, but also shows developers photos of the surrounding areas, the Sorg Opera House, the Historic Districts, Smith Park, the Riverside, bike trails, businesses like Triple Moon, attractive event venues like the Windermere, to name just a few. We should also be including metrics on visitors to Smith Park, the Sorg, the Windermere, et cetera. In short, we need developers to see in this RFQ that others are succeeding here, and they can too, and that they've got something to work with. It's, it's not a situation where they're starting from scratch. So here's my ask. Let's stay flexible on timeline. I think we are all hopeful that developer response will be great, but there is also a chance that we might get less interest than we hoped for. But in the process, we might learn something new that we didn't know before, some idea, some concept, or some untapped audience that only comes to light through the upcoming process. And maybe we'll, we'll figure out that there may be a need to do another RFQ round. We just have to see how it plays out. So in sum, I think it is fair for council to set goals, but please avoid hard deadlines and remain flexible on timelines for big, for making big decisions on the fate of the properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smarda. Next, I would like to call Deborah Dukes to the podium, please. Would you like some help? And you may stand or sit according to your preference.
Okay, thanks. My name is.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
My name is Deborah Dukes. I live at 502 Sixteenth Avenue here in Middletown. And Mike, I have an urge or a desire, maybe you might want to say, to find out why I can have three criminal complaints against someone. This has been over a period of a year. I have three criminal complaints. I have a, a, um, order, protection order, and I called numerous times, and they just keep saying, make reports, make reports, make reports. I have been threatened. I've been called every name. I get 76 texts sometime in a day. I block it, and then it's another phone she uses. And it's, I mean, you know, I, I can't understand. She's never been picked up for it, though. She's even sent me death threats. She's even sent me, um, some candy by the guy she's feuding with me over which I've been with 20 years. And she wrote me a text and said, how's that candy taste? Ah, ha, ha, ha. Well, he ate it. I don't eat sweets, so that was her mistake, not mine. He ate it and fell out after four pieces. So I texted her back and told her, I don't eat sweets, so ha, 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 you know? But anyway, it's just ongoing. It's, it's, it's part of my problem because I have a spine injury. I'm trying to survive that, and anybody that has one knows that the nerves shoot down your leg. Anxiety plays a large part of that because I do well until I have to go through this. And like I said, I got the restraining order September of last year, '24. But before that, in April, I, I brought a restraining order, but I didn't have an address or her birthday. So the police said I had to call when I saw her. I didn't even really know her. But I finally found her, and it had expired. So I went back, judge gave me another one. Uh, Hamilton said they could serve it. Middletown said, we can't serve it because it doesn't have a court date. They said, but it's a legalized document. So then I finally got it served in September. Then, let's see, April the 30th, I called the supervisor at Middletown, day supervisor, and he wanted to know, how did I know it was her phone? I'm saying it has her name on it. Every text mail has her name on it. Well, couldn't somebody else use it? And know all my history? I don't think so. I said, and then it was like, well, you can't just go to, I said, I brought a certified copy up here. John Harris was here. I presented it because they can never find the warrant here, but they can find it in Hamilton at the Dealey Office, or they can find it at the courthouse. But for some reason, mine is being erased because we put that in that day. And, and then when you run it, it doesn't show up. So then he wants to know, you can't just take any kind of paper down there. What? It's a $14 paid or paid or certified copy. It's not just any paper. And that's all that's been done, nothing. And I want to know why. If, if, if my family got into it with her, but she did say she was an informant, and she worked for them, so I was crazy if I thought they were going to do something. And I didn't believe her, but I'm beginning to because it doesn't take a year to stop her from harassing me. And that's all I have to say about it. Could you find out why for me, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dukes. Next, I would like to call Roy Cordon, Gordon, excuse me, to the podium. You may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown address for the record, and then you'll have four minutes. Please commence.
My full name is Roy W. Gordon. My, my address is 1506 Park Drive. Monday morning, they turned my water off, even though I paid the past due amount. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Even though I paid the past due amount, um, I tried to get ahold of somebody at the water department, called six, seven times. I didn't get to talk to somebody from the water department until I actually came down and had to talk, go through the manager's office to talk to somebody in the water department. They keep telling me I can get my water turned on if I give them the balance due. The problem is, mom, my mom passed away last year. She lived at the house. She left me and my brother, the executors of the house. But we haven't been able to get, to get it changed over to our name. I've talked to four different lawyers, um, in person and four on the phone, and each one of them wants $6,000 or $8,000 upfront before they can take the case. And I understand because some people, my mind might not end up paying. But we're trying to get it changed, everything over changed over our name. The problem is when they shut the water off, because I don't have a legal document saying I'm the executor, I can't get it turned back on. Even though I have, she left us the house and the will. So my problem is, even though I could pay the bill, now I get paid tomorrow, I still can't get it turned back on. And I don't have four to six, four, five to $8,000 to get it turned back on. So I'm basically being forced out of my house because I have no water, no sewage. So I am asking the city manager, somebody, to temporarily let me get water back in my house so I don't have to try to rent a hotel room. Um, I'm just, me, me and my brother, it's been a long time since I, I got a full-time job now. I'm trying to get a part-time job on top of it so we can get ahead of this. But right now, we're stuck without water in our house. We have pets. We both work at places that weld, so we sweat all day. Can't take a shower, can't wash my clothes. And, you know, the guy that runs the water department, the supervisor, is, is not very cordial. He, he's, you know, he doesn't really relate. I talked to him today. He waited 40 minutes, 20 minutes before 5 o'clock to tell me he still couldn't do nothing for me. So I just, I want to see if I can get help from the city just so I get the water turned back on. I have the money to pay it, but I understand the rules, but my mom, we have paperwork saying she left the house in our name and the will. I just, can they put a temporary hold on that policy so I can, we can get the water turned back on? That's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Ms. Combs, is that something that we can look into?
Uh, my understanding is that Mr. Gordon already talked to Finance and the city manager's office. He's referring to Tina, and I, I thought that the water was going to be turned back on and that there was going to be a payment plan. That's what I understood this morning.
They told me because I don't have documents, no paperwork. Even though we're named as the executors in her will to take care of her property. We didn't have proper documents before.
Okay, so there's a conversation that still needs to be had.
Yeah, I think there's a maybe misunderstanding. We can follow up with you.
We'll follow, yes.
Mr. Gordon, we will.
Thank you. Next, I would like to call DeAngela McKnight to the podium. And you may sit or stand according to your preference. Please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into it at all times. Please state your first name, uh, your full name and your Middletown address for the record, and then you will have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Thank you.
Good evening, DeAngela McKnight, 720th Avenue, Middletown, Ohio. The reason I'm here is on behalf of my church, myself, and my community. As it has been stated earlier, um, on July the 7th, excuse me, July the 2nd, I called the Middletown Police Department, and I spoke with the chief and Officer Holly. And to be preventive of the things that was going to take place on Fourth of July with the house directly behind the church. Well, I'm thinking we're going to have some extra security rioting so it wouldn't take place. No, it did not happen. Like the lady had said earlier, we had to hear music until 3:30 in the morning. Not only that, but to call the police department, and they say it's nothing they can do. Not only that, nor send somebody out, okay? If you were to roll down Minnesota, it was mass people. Well, if you don't take care of the problem, do you think the problem going to get worse next year? Everybody knows, come to Middletown, we can do whatever we want. The police ain't going to do nothing. My thing is, if I knew the procedure to call the Sheriff Department, that's the county, the state, Federal Highway Patrol, but if they didn't have anybody, why couldn't they call one of them units? Second, they, we have video on our church where we show riding three-wheelers, urinating all the way around the church. On the next morning, on the 5th, we went and, one of the ladies went and got officers and made them come out and clean up Minnesota. Minnesota looked like a bomb had went through, okay? This is the second time I'm coming here to address this issue. Last time I came up, we don't get any support. People are driving, I mean, parking on the grass on Douglas Park, loud music. We're not getting any port, support from the law enforcement. I have an 86-year-old mom. Do you think it's fair that she had to hear that boom, boom, boom all night and can't go to sleep? Or firecrackers, fire, uh, fireworks? A couple of years ago, Purnell Huff had fireworks in Barnish Park. They shut him down. He didn't have any permit. When the police department came down the street, they should have seen these acts. You got a permit. This was residential area that we had to, you couldn't even get down the street. Why should we allow people to come down here and do whatever they want to? They're not paying property tax. They're not, and the community people, but we need to address this. Why aren't we addressing? Like I said, Brothermore, I called the police, the police on, on July the 4th. Can't do anything. I, I, I left my name and number and told them that they had, the police chief called me. That was July the 4th to July, today is July the 15th. I haven't heard from him. Why? This is my question as I leave this podium. Why do we have to live like this in the South End and don't get any support from the police department? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKnight. Next, I would like to, to call Bill Morton to the podium. Bill Morton? You may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak into it at all times. Please state your full name and Middletown work address or interest in the city for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Thank you.
Thank you for your time again. My name is Bill Morton, and I'm here to speak regarding our application for ordinance 2025-42, the assisted living we spoke about last week. In the forum, at the last meeting, I felt there were a few items that were a little fuzzy and maybe the communication wasn't presented clearly, and that is on my air, so I apologize for that. But there are just three things I wanted to walk through really quickly, and I do appreciate your time and just got a couple of minutes. You know, the, the first item that I wanted to talk about was how we were continually referred to as skilled nursing in the, in staff's presentation, which is significantly different than assisted living. So what we are proposing is assisted living where the residents are able, they are mobile, they only have maybe one, possibly two, needs of assistance per day. They are by no means 24-hour care, by no means bedridden. I do think that's important in respect to some of the concerns with the services. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. These residents in the assisted living are not necessarily prone to falls, no more prone than you would be at your home, probably less prone because the building is designed and constructed for ADA standards. And then the second item was, just again, to reiterate, we, we did a study, we managed 23 buildings. Our, our communities do not increase the number of service calls. Our staff is trained to triage unexpected events, call if absolutely necessary, but again, these seniors are going to be more likely to make emergency call in their own residence as opposed to in a purpose-built, dedicated senior community. One could argue that there would be less calls in this facility. Again, it's not skilled nursing, it is assisted living. We do have a community that's up in operation in, in Lebanon, just a few miles down the road. We ran a report, we communicated with the city manager. We had 31 EMS runs over the past 12 months in that, in that facility. And three, something we didn't bring up because the, the market study had not been fully finalized, there's a significant need for this type of housing in Middletown. Just a few data points that we received from the study after getting approval from Planning Commission. There are eight assisted living communities in the area. They're at 97.4% occupied. Rates range from $4,800 a month to $7,300 per month. These are market rate assisted living. There is no affordable assisted living in the community. The market study says demand's going to continue to increase in the foreseeable future as everyone talks about the Silver Tsunami, the aging population, the, the 75 and older population will grow 19.4% over the next five years in Middletown. Happy to share this study with all of you. I can email it. At that same time, the demand has increased, supply has not increased. There's only been 50 beds of assisted living built in Middletown in the past 37 years. So we're confident there's a need. The state of Ohio, elected officials know there's a shortage approaching. That's why they passed legislation last year to increase the Medicaid assisted living rate, which makes it economically feasible to put seniors in that setting. Today's case, it's not economically feasible, but this was changed last year. Income and asset-eligible seniors would qualify for this type of care for a nominal fee instead of paying the 4, 300 to the $7,000 per month. Specifically in Middletown, our market study told us there are 2,000 households that would qualify immediately upon our opening to have a nominal fee assisted living. When I say nominal, less than $1,000, as opposed to market rate assisted living, which is present currently at $7,000 per month. So I ask you, please reconsider our rezoning application and follow staff's recommendation to approve, which would allow us to develop a community that'll care for seniors of Middletown. And I feel free to call me anytime over the next couple of weeks with any questions at all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Next, I would like to call Mr. Dave Pierce to the podium. And you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak into it at all times. Please state your name and address, and then you'll have four minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Dave Pierce, 607 Tar Oaks Drive. Here tonight, on behalf of the Ohio Challenge, just to talk to the, you and the community about the upcoming event. This weekend starts Friday at 5:00, continues then on Saturday at 4:00. And for people that get up really early in the morning, feel free to go down and see a really neat competition of what we call a key grab contest, where pilots will be flying into Smith Park, and they'll try and take an oversized key off the top of a pole. And so they'll be flying into, and it'll be really cool to watch them compete because the winner gets $1,000. So it's always a fun event to watch and see, and it's free to enter the So it's always a fun event to watch and see, and it's free to enter the park at least on Saturday and Sunday morning. I think you pretty much know what we have in store. We've got 19 competitive pilots, three special shapes, a unicorn, a fish, and a tiger. We've got tethered balloon rides, we've all have the glow, team fast tracks, and a choreographed fireworks and drone show. Will also be the Butler County Warbirds out of the airport will provide plane rides over downtown and throughout Middletown. They'll have seven, eight planes out there providing those rides. We've got a largest number of food trucks, craft vendors, a car show, and a jam-packed kids' zone to make sure that they've got something to do. And as we celebrate the 200th anniversary of the Miami Canal, we will be paying tribute to that and participating in it. There will be an oversized canoe as a display, and then we've got a special surprise within the drone show to celebrate the 200-year anniversary of the canal. New this year, we're going to paint the sky with kites. And so we've, we've arranged with a company in Missouri that is, has the largest collection of kites, and they're going to be bringing them here and putting them on display for us both Friday and Saturday evening. Couple of things that people need to go, know before they show up. Please leave your drones at home. It's a no-fly zone at Smith Park. Drones and balloon envelopes don't get along very well. So keep your drones at home. No alcohol can be brought into the park, which means just keep your hard-sided coolers at home with your drones. And on our website, we've got a full list of things that are prohibited and things that are permitted to bring into the park. So there's a lot of things we welcome, but there's a few things that we just can't have there to be able to protect for everybody's safety. And we know that weather's going to play an impact on the event. We just don't know what yet. So watch the weather closely. We'll be watching it very closely. And we will be using our website, ohiochallenge.com to communicate with you. We will also be using @theohiochallenge on Facebook to communicate with you what our plans are for the evening and the impact of the weather. Our goal will be to keep everybody as safe as we can. We're not going to put anybody in harm's way. So stay tuned to those website and Facebook and hope to see as many of you there as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. And lastly, I'd like to call Ms. Wanda Glover to the podium. Lastly, meaning the last one. And you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into it at all times.
Hi, I'm Wanda Glover, 1106 Canyon Mid Avenue, Middletown, Ohio. I chair the Second Ward Community Council, the Vice of the NAACP, and I'm on the cab board. So I get a lot of complaints brought to me, and I really, really feel sorry for United Missionary Baptist Church and what happened to them. And I also feel sorry for myself and my community because on our streets, we still have the litter of the fireworks that went on that night and all the people that were crowding our streets. And we haven't seen a street sweeper in, huh, it seems like a week or so, but I mean, the fireworks are still there. The parking lot, the lot next to my house where the house of the parents used to be is no longer there. Once it was an option for me to buy it before COVID, and I haven't gotten that option since. But they park cars all along by my house, you know, and nothing's done about that because it's not my property. And even when I planted grass seeds, people ride through it, you know? But I'm just saying, the noise that goes on in my community and the older people that live there, some of them are now gone to nursing homes because they couldn't stand the noise, the loud music, the blaring of a, I guess it's some company that puts together car radios in one of the alleys. And I don't know if they have, what do they call the boxes where you can tell when the police are coming or whatever? But I just know that it's nonstop, you know? And the fireworks were horrible that night, and they were blazing over my house and that lot that I really wanted to buy. And I can't buy it because it's not for sale, I guess. But it should be because the way they're destroying the community is really appalling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. And that concludes our citizen comments. Next item on the agenda is council comments. We will begin to my left with Councilmember Lally, followed by Councilmember Carter, then to my right with Councilmember West, followed by Councilmember Horn, and I will speak last. Mr. Lally?
Thank you, Mayor Schlampke. Just a couple of things, the Hubble balloon challenge is an incredible event, so I hope as many people go out to, to it as you can. And if you can catch the drone show that night, last year was the first year they did the drone show, and that thing is incredible. It's unbelievable how cool it is. I never realized you could really, you could do that. And this year, I think Mr. Pierce said they've got over 200 drones at this one. So if you get a chance, go out, the balloons are always fun to check out. I guess he said, Dave leave? Oh, said they're going to do a kite thing. I've been trying to tell Dave to go fly a kite for years. He's finally, finally listening to me. He, he wasn't even here to hear that. So, next thing, I want to say absolute fantastic work to Public Works, particularly Nicole Clark for the fireworks and the 3rd of July, 4th of July event at Smith Park. It was, it actually was a great time. The fireworks at Smith Park were incredible. And so hats off to Public Works, Nicole Clark specifically, and to our public safety departments for keeping everybody safe and secure at it. Want to say thank you to our city manager and finance director for having the foresight and the, the approach to rescue the summer programs at the Sunny Hill Community Center. I think that was the right thing to do, and I appreciate staff staying on top of that and getting something done for the children of this community that, you know, I think you guys really hit a home run on that to stay ahead. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lally. Mrs. Carter?
Good evening. I have something I want to share, and this isn't to knock the police department. It's not, it's, I'm not knocking anyone. I just want to read something so that you can get a handle on the protection that we do have and we have access to. July 5th, 2014. A 4th of July block party, fire walk, fireworks display was put to a halt Friday night because the organizer didn't get city approval to set off fireworks. Middletown Police and Fire officials said the event drew a crowd of about 2,000 to Barnet's Park near downtown Middletown, said Deputy Chief Paul Lally of the Middletown Division of Fire. Police and the officials showed up not long before the fireworks were to be set off around 10:08, 10:00 PM Friday. The unsanctioned fireworks was a public safety issue because the organizer didn't have a permit, liability insurance, or other required safety measures in place for the event, Lally said. At least 15 Middletown Police Officers and the Ohio State Highway Patrol responded to the scene to help disperse the large crowd. Lally said he was told by every, by the event goers that the block party and fireworks display had been going on for the past several years. The organizer was issued a citation. The South End did not get that respect on July 4th. We pay taxes, and we expect when we call that someone will respond instead of being told that we're busy doing something else, so we can't answer your requests. And this went on all night. A lot of property was destroyed, a lot of paper, a lot of things were there on the ground, and no one even gave it a thought that this South End needed some protection also. The streets were blocked from 14th Avenue to Lafayette. People were trying to drop their kids off at the park and at their grandparents. They couldn't get down the street. Nor could we get any assistance. No one bothered to even give us a thought on that end. And not to mention the destruction to the church. The destruction to a church. That church has never suffered destruction, and it's been on that corner forever. So I'm disappointed. As a city councilwoman, it makes my heart feel sad that we don't get the service that we deserve on the South End. You can say, it's okay, we'll make it better, but we have to see something. And it will not stop. It will not stop unless something's done. We have a lot of people that disrespect that whole area. They're on the grounds, they park their cars everywhere. And it's not, it's, it's traumatizing. It's traumatizing for the area. And it's the reason I'm speaking, because this is my city. I ran for city council to help my city, and right now I feel helpless because I too called, and they said, we're busy, we can't get down there. So something has to happen, something. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter. Mr. West?
Yep, good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick comments tonight. I'd like to thank Middletown City Schools for hosting Kayla Harrison's homecoming. I'd like to thank Kayla's family and her team. It was a great night. She doesn't get home very often, at least publicly, and it was good to hear her, her comments and hear a little bit more about her past and urge youth to, to always keep moving forward. Secondly, just a heads up to council, haven't had a, a chance to speak with the rest of you, but last night at Park Board, the Park Board did approve new playground equipment for Damon Park. So that will be coming in front of us pretty soon. And then we're also looking at a couple of potential other upgrades within, within that park, as well as an update on the Douglas Park splash pad. It's in production right now. There were some material delays with the, with the manufacturer, but it's in production right now. Once it's shipped and received here to the city, installation's fairly quick on these kind of splash, splash pads. So, Mr. Taddeus, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was end of August, early September for potential ribbon cutting at the new splash pad there. But that's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Horn?
I don't have anything to, yield to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I do have several, well, some things to say, just that my normal things as well. I did want to say that I'll be speaking with Ms. Combs very soon about everything that was said here tonight. And again, like we talked about last time at the meeting, these cards are scanned and given to Ms. Combs and the heads of the department. So there should be some communication with each of you. That said, I want to also just thank you, Mr. West, for all you're doing and all you have done for the parks. It's good work. He is our Parks Board liaison, and he is very, very involved, and I appreciate that. And, Mr. Lally, I do think that Dave Pierce will hear what you said in some way this evening. There are so many fun events and activities happening in Middletown over the next three weeks. From a First Friday to Harry Potter birthday and trivia, a block party with five-star Comic-Con, speed puzzle competitions, teen art groups, arts and crafts workshops, bowling Friday night sweepers, and painting through history. Please do visit the calendar at downtownmiddletown.org for many of these events, but remember that the MI site is not an exclusive list. So do please be sure to search other locations, platforms, venues, and businesses in Middletown as well. The Ohio Challenge was already mentioned this evening, but I, for more information, please do visit their website. This Saturday, also July 19th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, the BMW Motorrad Demo Truck is coming to BMW Motorcycles of Greater Cincinnati, which is located at 140 North Verity Parkway in Middletown. Test rides are available on a first-come, first-served basis, and model availability may vary. So come early to secure your spot and then join in for a full day of fun riding and activities. For more information, please visit the calendar at downtownmiddletown.org. Later that night, Middletown's own classic rock band Chalice returns to DC Roadhouse located at 1316 Vale Avenue. Come out and rock this Saturday, July 19th at 8:00 PM. Moam, or the Middletown Open Air Market, is the Sunday, is this Sunday, July 20th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM across from Gravel Road Brewing Company downtown, located at 916 First Avenue. You will find produce, food, clothes, and all kinds of wares. It is a fun day, so please do join. Also on Sunday, July 20th, Midpoint Library Middletown is teaming up with New Ales Brewing to bring you a spelling bee showdown like no other. Test your vocabulary, sift on craft beer, and complete for, compete for bragging rights and bookish prizes. The event is from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM at New Ales Brewing located at 1330 Manchester Avenue. The Middletown Historical Society will be celebrating the bicentennial of the Miami Erie Canal on Monday, July 21st at 11:00 AM. The brown, the groundbreaking of the canal occurred 200 years ago on July 21st, 1825, right here in Middletown. The site is commemorated by the Miami and Erie Canal Boulder Monument located at the corner of Verity Parkway and Yankee Road. This is where the ceremony will take place. For more information, please visit downtownmiddletown.org. Also on Monday, July 21st, is a community blood drive at the Midpoint Library Middletown Parking Lot located at 125 South Broad Street. Save a life and give blood on the Versity Blood Center of Ohio Mobile Coach. Appointments are encouraged. You can visit www.donortime.com or call 937-461-3220 for an appointment and use the sponsor ID 1702. Then join for the Canal Days Bicentennial Festival next Saturday, July 26th. The day starts at 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM with our beloved Thunderfest Historic Car Show. At 5:00 PM is a parade, and from 5:30 PM to 10:30 PM, the celebration heats up with an event, an evening packed full of entertainment, activities for all ages, live music, food trucks, artisan vendors, games, historic displays, and canal-themed fun. To learn more, please visit the calendar at downtownmiddletown.org. Sunday, July 27th, from 11:30 AM to 4:00 PM, enjoy the classic cars, motorcycles, hot rod show, hangout, and cruise-in with Lester's Rock and Roll Shop slash DC House Cruise-In. There is no registration for this free event every last Sunday of the month from May to October at DC Roadhouse located at 1316 Vale Avenue. Kids ages 0 to 18 eat free at the Middletown Midpoint Library all summer. The summer food service program is funded by the USDA and provided through a partnership between Midpoint Library and Children's Hunger Alliance. For more information, please visit midpointlibrary.org, and that's point with an E, or call the library at 513-424-1251. As a reminder, the city of Middletown accepts applications for our boards and commissions throughout the year. So if there's something that you have an interest in and you wish to give back to your city in this way, please do submit your application. To learn more, please visit the city's website at cityofmiddletown.org. And lastly, and as always, there are many ways to get involved with your community and give back. Join a board or committee, run for office, apply for a job with the city, volunteer at the hospital, pick up trash in your neighborhood or park, plant a garden in your yard, smile at a neighbor, find joy or satisfaction in a job well done, whatever work you do, or just have a positive and giving attitude. Find something that you can do regularly and give back. We are all connected, and we are all in this together. The care of our city is an adventure in which we all get to share. That is all for me tonight, and this concludes our council comments. The next item on the agenda is city manager reports. City Manager Ms. Ashley Combs, you have the floor.
Good evening. First, I'd like to welcome Adam Snotty. He is the principal of the Butler Tech Aviation Center, and he's going to be giving a presentation about the center.
Thank you all for your time this evening. I know when I was here and spoke briefly to you about six weeks ago, we had talked about coming back to provide a little bit more information and detail about the aviation center at Butler Tech. So we'll, I'll try to set the stage, and then I'm going to introduce a couple of other folks that are here from Butler Tech as well, just to give you an overview of where things stand and what we anticipate the aviation center being able to offer in the not-too-distant future. If we could go to the next slide on the presentation. So very briefly, So very briefly, here in a second, I'm going to have our Superintendent William Sprankles is going to provide some context for how the Aviation Center fits within both what Butler Tech is hoping to do for the students in this area, this county, but also how it fits within the context of aviation in the greater Middletown area as well. And then we will have a little bit of overview about how the aviation program at Butler Tech got started, where it currently stands, and what we anticipate can come from it here in the near future and some of the things that we hope there will be community impact for. So I'm going to have William come up here and I'll have Kristin Abadakar, our Assistant Superintendent, is also here as well. So give them the floor for just a moment and then between the three of us, we're going to try to walk you through very briefly where things stand in that regard.
Thank you for having us. Good evening. Good evening to the rest of the members from the city there to here tonight. If you can advance to the next slide, we'll kind of cover a couple of things. These are three massive projects. I will cover two of them and then I'll let Kristin explain the Aviation Center. All three of these projects, students in the City of Middletown have access to all three of them. So this is part of Butler Tech's footprint. On the far right, you see our Bioscience Expansion, which is our healthcare facility for high school students. That facility is going to hold around 500 to 600 students that'll provide six to seven contemporary or current or modern healthcare pathways. In the middle, we know, which is the heart of Middletown, is our new advanced manufacturing hub, which is located in the City of Hamilton. But once again, all current high school students from the City of Middletown have access to this advanced manufacturing facility. And I'll let Kristin give a brief overview of the Aviation Center.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. One other thing about the advanced manufacturing hub, students in Middletown also qualify for a special, with our partnership with Miami University, to attend Miami through the Middletown Promise with Miami, free of charge as well. So it's important to point out that our partnership with Miami also provides that access to Middletown students. In addition, our new Aviation Center is set to hold almost 200 students, so between 175 and 200 high school students, grade 10 through 12. We've been serving students in Middletown, of course, at our main campuses, in our satellite programs, but now at our new aviation site. We have had our aviation site at the Middletown Airport for the last six years, but in our partnership with the City of Middletown, we and many others in the county were set to expand that to serve more students. We're also expanding it to three pathways. I think William and Autumn are going to jump in and talk more specifically, but AMP, which is airframe and power plant maintenance, which will be sortified through the FAA, engineering, aviation, aerospace engineering, and private pilot.
Can you go to the next slide, please? Here's what's super cool about the history of Middletown. This is not something that I was aware of until a couple of years ago when we started on our journey and our process to have an aviation high school located on the runway. This is a picture from around the 1940s of the Aranka Corporation, which was one of the historical aviation manufacturing plants located here in Middletown that relocated here after the flood down at Lunkin Airport. What's interesting is this particular business specialized in the exact same three pathways that our high school is going to offer. AMP mechanics, aerospace engineering, and eventually leading to private pilot access. So that rich history that Middletown has, we're really proud to be offering a current modern-day airport for high school students. That's a reflection of the great history you guys have here in Middletown.
If you could go ahead and go to the next there. So as Kristin mentioned just a moment ago, the aviation program at Butler Tech's been around now for about six years. It's been part of the D Russell Lee Building, the main campus in Fairfield Township. And what students have been doing for the past number of years is splitting their day to where they would take all of their coursework in aviation at our current location in the rented facility at the airport, while they would then shuttle back to D Russell Lee to take their academic courses. And one of the things that we're really excited about with this Aviation Center project is obviously that we will all be under one roof and that midday travel will be eliminated. We will have students with us all day doing both aviation and academics. Historically, the program was about 25 juniors, 25 seniors each year, and it was a two-year program. But as we're going to see here in a second, one of the ways that we're expanding this is that it will no longer be just two years and the number of students that we're able to serve is going to rise significantly. If we could go to the next. The reason that this has come about is the growth in the aviation industry. So just as a quick note, just in the context of this general area in our part of the world in North America, the numbers you see there are the needs for folks in the aviation industry by the end of the decade. 13,000 aviation technicians, 5,000 jobs in aerospace, there's an enormous vacancy rate in air traffic control. I was at an event for educators down at CVG just last week and their HR director made a comment that they surveyed the different businesses that they have on campus and said, "Tell us what some of your workforce needs are going to be over the course of the next five to seven years." And they came back and said, "Well, as we look at it, like, the industry is going to need about 1,300 more aviation maintenance technicians." And the HR director asked them, "Well, how many of those are here at CVG?" And they said, "No, that's all of them. That's just here in Cincinnati." And that's part of what has driven this project, is there is a clear and obvious industry demand, there's a student interest, and between the combination of that student programming and what the local area needs, we believe that that creates a ton of opportunity to both give students additional opportunity and access to these programs, but to also set them up in a productive manner for whatever they choose to do beyond high school, hopefully in an aviation career that should be beneficial to the community and the economics. And then I think William's going to take a second and highlight how this project came to fruition with some of our partners.
Next slide. Kristin, I'll do the top half. You can cover the bottom. The top half of this slide is our funding partners. We want to make sure that city council knows across Butler County how this project has been funded. Butler Tech contributed $7 million of our own funds from taxpayers. The Butler County Commissioners allocated $7 million for this aviation project and we want to make sure that we thank them publicly whenever we have a chance, that we celebrate that. The jobs, Ohio Site Inventory Program was another million. City of Middletown kicked in 500,000. And we currently have a request through Houston's office for $700,000 as a federal earmark. Currently, it's right around 15 and a half million total dollars is what the project is. That's what it consists of. And we just want to express our gratitude, whether it's the Commissioners, whether it's the City of Middletown, whether it's the taxpayers that support Butler Tech. We're super thankful. We're super humbled to be able to have that type of funding to put one of the most advanced high schools in the country right here in Middletown. I'll let Kristin highlight three or four key companies.
Something that we know, that part of the impetus for the expansion of this, is we believe that this site is going to be an economic driver for the City of Middletown, both for the students and the workforce pipeline that we're going to create, but hopefully to continue to attract more businesses in the field of aviation. Southwest Ohio, of course, and Ohio in general, has a huge presence in the aerospace industry. And we know that when we're providing the workforce and the pipeline of that, that it's going to draw additional businesses, students, families. We already have families from outside of our county, different parts of the state, that are interested in moving specifically to attend this high school. So it's very exciting for us, just knowing that there's not too many high schools around the country that offer these types of programs for high school students. And we'll also continue to look at opportunities to expand on the adult ed side as well, to provide that type of training for adults as well. Some of our major industry partners, of course, Magellan Aerospace, which is our new neighbor across the way there, Standard Aero, CTL Aerospace, the Middletown Regional Airport has been wonderful to work with and partnership. So definitely thank our partnership there with NIC and everyone there that supports with the FBO, with AMS. They have been great partners with us. Again, getting our kids' real world into the workforce when they're still in high school. We have students that are currently working at the airport while they're going to school. And again, we want to continue bringing additional businesses to Middletown by providing the skilled workforce of the future.
If you could go to the next real quick. So as Kristin alluded to a moment ago, one of our major goals is to expand our program capacity. So historically, the program had around 50 students in it, juniors and seniors. And one of the primary ways that we're going to be able to grow this program significantly in the next two to three years is by moving it from a two-year programming model to a three-year programming model, where students will enter not in their 11th grade year, but in their 10th grade year. So they will be able to come to us as sophomores, and that allows us to take more students by grade level. And then obviously, in the new facility, we will have the ability to hire additional staff, which we've already begun the process of, and then to offer additional program offerings within that context. If you could go to the next, this chart gives a good visual sense of what Kristin alluded to a moment ago, where what we envision is as students come in as 10th graders, they receive a similar experience to get the foundational coursework and understanding of what's important for aviation under their belts. But as they finish their 10th grade year, they will then choose one of the three primary pathways within aviation, which they will pursue in more detail their junior and senior years. So there's the pilot pathway, which includes both pilot and flight, but also unmanned aerial systems and drone piloting. Currently, we're able to get students prepared for the written part of an FAA pilot test. We're also capable of helping them achieve their Part 107 commercial drone license, which of course is not just relevant to aviation, but is relevant in real estate, in agriculture, in all kinds of other industries. The maintenance technician path is probably our single biggest area of growth that's to come over the next two to three years. The demand is there, but there is also, that's the clear expansion, because most of what we've had historically has been more rooted in the pilot pathway. So the maintenance pathway is what, by having the new building, what we're going to be able to take and build upon from what we currently offer pilot-wise. And again, we'll be able to help students not only get ready for their maintenance general test, but ultimately, our goal is to be able to offer airframe and power plant certification within that program as well. It will take us a little time to build that out because the equipment that's necessary is both costly and it takes time to procure. So it's going to take us a little time to build it out, but those things are on the radar. And then there's also the aerospace engineering pathway that students will have the ability to choose that is also in the works to develop. If we could go to the next, just a very quick visual overlay. If you were to take the Aviation Center and just peel the roof back and look at the way the building is designed, just a very quick sense of what you're looking at. The main entrance there is kind of the bottom center, and as you walk in the building, if you think of it as four quadrants, the main office and the operational areas of the building are the front left. The front right includes a flight simulation lab and some academic classroom space, which will also allow for simultaneous instruction between the Aviation Center and the Advanced Manufacturing Center that's going in in Hamilton, so that teachers and students could interact even if they're not physically in the same room in real time. The back half of the building, then, are the aviation-specific labs, with airframe and power plant having a couple of locations, and then the aerospace engineering, and then obviously pilot rolled in. And then there is also a hangar that is not attached to the building, but is shortly outside, probably about a 20-second walk or so across the way. This is what is currently underway. This is what we intend to open at some point in early 2026 as we move up. So to give you just a quick timeline estimate, we will start the school year here in a few weeks under the current split location, where it's DRL for academics, the airport will be the primary location for aviation classes, but once this facility is ready to open at some point, tentatively January, February of 2026, we anticipate everything being able to move there to finish out the year and then begin building out things further. And just one other quick thing, if we could go to the next, just a couple pictures, and this does not even begin to show all the progress from the last two to three weeks, but we've had a number of our current students sign one of the final beams they put in place, so that all of those students know that they are a special part of opening this. And then just a quick look at from two or three weeks ago, the construction, but they have largely enclosed most of the roof. They've begun to put up interior walls already as well. They just started drywall last week on the inside. So the project does continue to progress in a very, very meaningful way in that regard. And if you could go ahead and go to the next real quick. And then I know William and I wanted to mention a couple of things, community impact-wise, so I'll let him speak to that for just a second.
Student opportunities for the students in Middletown is important for us to address. We believe there's an opportunity for more young people in Middletown to access this airport, this high school. We'd like to see more young people from Middletown City Schools and the local surrounding communities tap into this. We have students from all over the county coming to this particular airport. And so earlier this evening, when I heard Mr. Pierce speaking about the Challenge Ohio event from drones to balloons to kites, we know that type of excitement already exists here. We just have to keep being repetitious and diligent around helping young people in the City of Middletown believe they're fully capable of becoming pilots, they're fully capable of becoming aerospace engineers. We have all of the talent right here in Middletown, and we want the young people to deeply believe they are fully capable of accessing one of the most advanced high schools in the country right here. So we're asking you all to help join us in spreading that good word, spreading that message, and helping young people believe that they can access the most advanced jobs in the aviation industry right here in Middletown.
Yeah. And just to follow up on a couple of those things, obviously, this is a huge, we believe at least, a huge economic and workforce development project that may not show up immediately, but that can pay huge dividends to the City of Middletown and the general area over the course of the coming years, as more and more students begin to go through this program, as they begin to enter the workforce with new opportunities under their belts. And then in regard to civic engagement, too, we view the Aviation Center primarily for student education. That's obviously first and foremost. But we also see a number of opportunities to connect with other organizations and groups in the area. We've reached out already to do a couple of things in conjunction with the Midpoint Library, once the building opens up in the spring and into the summer, and some other organizations of that nature, where we want to get more people into the facility to see what we have to offer, to help us promote the awareness of what opportunities are going to exist for students. And certainly, that's probably our one major ask of anyone, for you all and anyone else that is in a position of relevance in the City of Middletown, is to help us think of other ways to connect. One of the things that I know I'm really passionate about in my role as the Principal of the Aviation Center is finding ways to get other groups to connect to where our students can be beneficial to them, but they can also bring new opportunities for our students as well, and try to tie those things together to the greatest extent possible. So we appreciate your time this evening to give a quick overview and update with things. I think if you have any questions, we're certainly happy to try to answer or address those, but we appreciate the time very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
I do.
Mr. Horn?
I appreciate the presentation. I'm on the airport board, so I've been in close communication with folks, and they also appreciate that, as I always tell them, you know, until it's fully constructed and you are a partner, you're a guest. And they said, "You've been an excellent guest because we have pilots that are flying in and flying out." The question I have is, is this is outstanding for our future generation. But can we, I guess the question I have, down the road, can we have a conversation about folks that are transitioning from maybe the military to another, to this profession? Is there going to be adult classes in the evenings where folks can take advantage of this, which also gives you more classes being done, more instructors, more, 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 more? Or is this just going to be strictly for the students during the day?
I'll give a short answer and then I'll have Kristin elaborate on that. The short answer is in the immediate term, it's a secondary building for high school students. But I think I'll have her elaborate that we have had some preliminary discussions about some potential adult ed opportunities that may exist, so I'll let her add to that a little bit.
Yeah. So specifically on the Part 147 FAA maintenance curriculum and certification, the answer is yes. We're currently exploring that. We've been working with our other partner schools for adult ed opportunities. That is in the plan. So we're looking about 18 to 24 months out. And once we get things up and running on the secondary side, our goal would be to start adding evening opportunities for adults in the area as well.
The reason I ask that is because at times you do see where some doors close and you need another door open. And I've had, when I was in the trades, a lot of guys that I worked with, they did their X amount of time in the military and they worked on planes at the time and they couldn't find anything at that time. This was last century. So they got into the So they got into the electrical trade. So there might be a situation where someone is, okay, I need something to do. I still can work with my hands, or I have this ability. So I, I'm not making anyone make commitment here, but it's like, we have this brand-new facility, and in the evening, if folks can do a transition to a new, as you say, if there's a need and you're not fulfilling it, then we have more needs for people who are willing to work.
Absolutely. Yeah, and again, we're looking from early on, not just high school kids. We plan on offering summer camps and other types to get kids excited about school, about aviation, about the industry, early on. So they're starting to think about these opportunities even earlier. So from a very young age, and really infinitely, it's part of the plans.
I got, I just had a couple, oh, go ahead, Paul.
Yep.
So when you get to the three-year program, so will it be rolled, like someone has to come in as a sophomore, go junior, then senior? Or can someone come in as a junior, come in as a senior? That's the first part of my question.
So our program model is moving to a full three-year model, so students will need to come in when they are sophomores at that point, because that is the design for the whole program. And one of the primary reasons for that is because that Part 147 maintenance program is so heavily regulated by the FAA, it requires additional time to work through. So as we work forward with things, that third year is going to allow us more opportunity to lay the groundwork for all the students, regardless of which way they go. But it's going to ensure that we can get students as far through that maintenance program as possible, but it should also open up additional senior year opportunities for students that are either in that pilot route or in the aerospace route.
And then what's the process if a student wants to get into the program? What do they have to do to qualify to get into the program?
So students, as long as they are residents within Butler Tech's jurisdiction, so all of Butler County, plus we also represent, we also serve Northwest Local Schools and Northern Hamilton County. Any of our students that live within that jurisdiction, any of those districts, they all have the same equal opportunity to apply for any of Butler Tech's programs, aviation included. And just the quick timeline is our recruitment cycle, the applications typically open in somewhere in the November range is when the application process opens. And usually, it closes in, depending, and I know, I think we're in the middle of transitioning a few things date-wise on our end, typically, it's end of January where the deadline comes, and at that point, we utilize a lottery system where all the students that have said, my first choice would be to go to aviation, at that point, then the lottery is utilized where we have, say, we had 50 spots and we have 85 student applications, then that lottery process is used to work through which students would receive offers to attend the program at that point.
Good, thank you.
I just had a couple, I had questions, but you've already answered them. But one of the points, you know, there's a lot of people, especially being this close to Rick Patterson, you know, they get out after their first contractual obligation, whether it be a four-year, five-year, six-year obligation, and it's, I mean, there's a huge hole in the community, especially, you know, if somebody was an aviation mechanic or technician or worked, you know, in any type of air traffic control setting, and then they want to get out and, you know, kind of strengthen some of that on the private side. So that's good to hear. But no, I mean, we're all excited for this to open. This is a huge opportunity, especially, I mean, a lot of us up here, we've talked about for years that, you know, the youth, I don't think they fully understand what this opportunity will be. But one of the number-one questions I'm asked by residents is always, what are they building at the airport? You know, and so there's a buzz about it, but there's not really an understanding. And so we will definitely help spread the word.
And just to add to that point, that's one of the questions that, I'm new in this role over the last few months. That's one of the number-one questions that I hear regularly when I interact with folks, and that's part of some of the outreach we've started to do with some of the other organizations, is to, in the immediate term, just help raise community awareness of what the project is, and to help people better understand what the potential opportunities and benefits are, obviously for students, but for the greater community at large. And certainly, obviously, we would appreciate any efforts that you all have in that regard, and we are certainly thankful for any efforts just to help make connections for things that maybe we haven't put two and two together yet, that this and this other group over here would be a logical fit. I think we would be happy to explore any of those types of things moving forward.
I just want to praise Butler Tech, because my daughter graduated from Butler Tech for veterinarian services. She attended the Butler Tech Natural Science Center, yes. And it's been a great addition to Butler County, to have Butler Tech, yes.
Yes, I also just want to also praise, every time I speak with a student, someone who's graduated from one of Butler Tech's programs, it's very apparent in who they are, the way they stand, the way they speak, the way they have eye contact and are so professional. In fact, when I visited last year and I met some of the students, I had to ask, like, is this high school? Are these like graduate students? Like, what's going on here? They're so mature, so well-presenting. So thank you for all the work that you do with our youth and our young people here in Butler County. Very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we appreciate that. And just last couple of quick thoughts. If any of you would like to head out over to the construction site at some point in the next few months before it opens, feel free to reach out to any of us. I would certainly be happy to get things scheduled to where we would love to kind of show you where things stand and help you get a better sense to visualize what's what. But certainly, once the building is open, we certainly would like to welcome you all out there at that point as well. We appreciate your time very much. I'd like to thank Ashley real quick as well for giving us time and putting us on the agenda for this evening as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Combs, if it's okay with you, we can go ahead and take about a 10-minute break and reconvene at about 7:13. Thank you. And thank you so much. Ms. Combs, you have the floor.
Thank you. So the next presentation's going to be Tracy Jenkins, our Grant and Special Project Coordinator. She's going to give a grants overview.
All right. All right. Good evening. My name is Tracy Jenkins, and I'm the Grants and Project Coordinator for the Department of Community and Economic Development. Thank you inviting me today to provide this update. Many of the grants that I'm going to show you have a TBD in one of the columns. And this is due to either the NOFO not being released, which is the Notice of Grant Funding, or specifically for the federal and state grants. Some of those are still kind of in flux and up in the air with whether or not they're going to be funded. So those are hit and miss at this point. So I'll begin with some information regarding the importance of grant funding in the city, municipalities specifically. The following seven highlights have more details below each one, but in the interest of time, I'll let you just read over those and I'll kind of hit the higher level things. But please let me know if you have any questions on those. All right. Why apply for grants? Applying for and receiving grants can provide numerous benefits to municipalities, ranging from financial support to community development and innovation. Here's a breakdown of the key benefits for the city of Middletown. One, financial relief and budget support. Two, community development and quality of life improvements. Three, economic growth and job creation. I'll give you a second. You can glance through those if you'd like. I'll give you a second. You can glance through those if you'd like. And these are things that we try and focus on as we're looking into grants to see what would be beneficial for the city. Four, capacity building and innovation. Partnerships and collaboration. Competitive edge and visibility. And last but not least, risk mitigation and resilience. So when we take all of those things into consideration, we look at the projects that we have interest or the council has shown interest in having for the city. Or even by the community for that matter. And then we start kind of moving forward with that research. And just for organization and ease of showing you what I've found, I've sorted this by project. And then the last slide I have is just an other. It's kind of like the miscellaneous file that don't necessarily need a full slide. And I have one special edition that did not make the PowerPoint, but I've received information. I have it here on my phone. I'll add that to there for you. Okay, so downtown refresh. I wish Gabe, I wish they were still here because I did want to, you know, we've been working really hard on this refresh project and community outreach and engagement. And it has been a wonderful experience and hopefully things keep with the trajectory that we're going. These are just a few of the highlighted properties that we're looking at for redevelopment. And we are also looking into, you know, hopefully grants or developers that will also combine privately owned properties or buildings. Okay, so here is some of the grants that we've identified. I'm not going to go through each individual one just for the sake of time. There's a lot of information here. I wasn't sure how much you wanted to see. But feel free to print this out when you get home if you want to look more deeply into that and email me with questions. And as we move forward into each specific project, once it's identified to move forward, then we can start applying for these things. The reason we don't apply for things right at the beginning, right away. If we are given the funding and we don't have, if we're not far enough along in the project and we're not able to make that deliverable by their date, their due date, then we won't be able to use that funding. So once we have the go ahead to do the project, then we will start really hitting the ground running on all of these. Get to the next slide. Okay, here is the town mall project. And this one, we have been awarded two and a half million, 25% match, which was achieved by the purchase of the mall. Paperboard. So I added the ARPA funds on there just to give a good overview of the three million that kind of got things moving with that. And then we do have the ODOD Brownfield remediation grant with that one as well for one and a half million. All right, and we have the event center on here. We applied for one grant for the, through AARP, the Community Challenge Grant. It was for $25,000, no match required. This was to be used for special programming for seniors. And we were going to utilize these funds for computer, like media centers for the seniors to be able to do computer instruction and internet safety for the seniors at the senior center. So I think it was a great, really strong application, but in the AARP email that they sent back, letting us know that we didn't receive it. They were overwhelmed by the number of applications they received this year. So we're just going to keep trying and potentially even submit even more. We are able to submit more than one on this one. So we're hopeful that next year we will get that funding. All right, and this is the housing grant. We did receive 75,000 from the Butler County Land Bank for infill property construction. I know that's not specifically a grant, but when you're looking at the big picture, I think it's good to see that, especially with the infill need at this point. All right, we do have a couple of other really large grants on there and we hope to start applying for those soon. All right, the Renaissance Point Project. This is with the application with the Warren County Port Authority. That's the ODOD 629 roadway improvement plan or grant. We did receive this grant for 1.875 million, 75% reimbursement up to that amount. This is going to be used specifically for infrastructure development for the Phase Two arena specific portion of the project. And we're hoping that starts really taking off the last quarter of this year. All right, the Community Grocer and Health Clinic. This was listed as one of the PDEC 2425 Quality of Life Recommended Projects at $7 million. And here are just a couple of photos of some similar grocer, health clinic projects in the state of Ohio. Gettysburg is probably the closest to us proximity wise, and that's a new build. Fairfax Market in Cleveland is also a new build. And then the market on Green, on the Green in Toledo, that's an adaptive use with one of their historic buildings. It turned into a grocer clinic. All right. All right, so this one is cut off at the bottom and I apologize for that. So we have received a couple of grants for this one and we have a few pending. We received the Alloy Development Pat Landy Access Fund Grant for 5,000. And then also the, just most recently, Jobs Ohio Ready Cincinnati Pre-Project Planning Program Grant. And that is for approximately 28,000. And both of those will be used for feasibility studies and environmental assessments of the land. The Middletown Community Foundation funding, we are just kind of waiting for that confirmation from them. Same with the CDBG funds for the 161. And I believe that is September, I believe, end of August, beginning of September. But that's the amount that they had given us previously. We also sent letters for congressional appropriations to Congressman Landsman, Congressman Davidson, Senator Moreno, and Senator Husted for seven mil. Those were mailed back the beginning of April and then we sent a follow-up email just a few weeks ago to those folks. So we're hoping, you know, with funding still in flux, we're hoping we hear something with those soon. Okay, and then just as a reference, so the Ready Cincinnati P4 Grant that we received. Once that is complete, then the Jobs Ohio Ready VCP, which is the Vibrant Communities Program. That's when that grant will be available for us to apply to. So once the P4 is complete, then we'll move forward to that one. And a lot of these will be post-construction with regards to programming for the community room, the grocer, and the health clinic. All right, and here's the miscellaneous other section that I spoke of. The AM 250, I'm sure you've seen the flag hanging in our lobby. We did receive that designation as an AM 250 city. But we, once we've received that, we applied for their grant and we received that in the amount of 5,000, which was the max. And that money will be utilized to hold a historic community event, which we plan to hold in the spring, early summer of next year. And we'll be planting trees and having some historical Middletown features with hopefully music and reenactments. So that should be a fun time. So look forward to that next year. And all of these other ones, these are ones that have been identified and could be applied to multiple projects, not one specific. So there's one down here, the Good Jobs Challenge that is targeted at jobs that advance industries critical to the U.S. economic competitiveness and the competitiveness of the applicant's region. So that's a really important one that we hope to do, you know, once we have a project and we're ready to move forward on that. The other project that I wanted to mention that didn't make the timing on this spreadsheet is for the airport. Nick Brumbach sent an update to me and he is very optimistic that he's going to be receiving an FAA grant to replace the jet's hangar roof. The total cost of that is over $252,000 and the match to the city is only going to be 12,000. So he said he will know something definitively within the next couple of weeks. So that's something very exciting. Okay. All right, and this is just some data that I pulled. This is just a comparison of some of the similar cities around the region based on demographic and size. Looks at the population, and this is non-ARPA grant funding. So I felt like that was important to note. So when you look at the grant staff FTEs in comparison. And maybe in the role only about seven, eight months, I think, at this point, I think we're doing really great. All right, so as you can see in Q1 and Q2, we've secured nearly six million in grant funding. Almost double of what's listed for 2024 in our column there. If you count the appropriations asks that we have, we have some pending funds over seven million. And these, this list and the numbers that I showed you does not include the grants that are coming from other departments that they're doing on their own. So public works, fire, police. They have their processes down to a science. So they have their own grants that aren't listed here. But based on this, I feel like we're in a great place and moving forward. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions or comments from council? I want to say thank you so much for putting that together. It was very informative and it looks really great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have Michelle Perkins, our program manager, who is going to talk about the Home Improvement Repair Program Round Three.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Michelle Perkins and I'm here to speak about the third round Home Improvement Repair Program and the application process. That will be different due to the grant funding we're utilizing. As you know, we are utilizing funding from the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG monies for the amount of 250,000. This year, there will be five, up to 5,000 per household awarded. The new review criteria that will be slightly, or the ones that are slightly similar from in the past is that the project must still be in an owner occupied house. And applicants who were in prior rounds one and two will not be eligible in this round as was done in the past. Applicants will still need to bring a quote from a contractor, a copy of their deed, a utility bill and the owner's name. However, the differences for this round is that this will be the first time that the program will be eligible for all properties within the city limits of Middletown. There will be an income qualifier. That's going to be according to CDBG guidelines that we will have in a form. There are also guidelines that if the property is over 45 years or older, then the project must go to the State Historic Commission for review and an environmental review will also need to be done. Finally, if the applicant is not code compliant, then funding must be utilized for a project that would bring the property into code compliance. With City Council's blessing, we would like to open the application window for online and in-person applications tomorrow. This does seem early as we do not actually have the funding available right now. We are actually expecting it to arrive at the end of August, which is normal for that type of funding to come in the summertime. But however, given the process that we are going to go through, we would like to open the application window. That way I can be available to answer any questions or walk people through the application process. And then I'm anticipating most of these properties will fall under these guidelines so that they can be vetted. And then by the time we receive the funding, the contracts will be available to sign for the applicants. And so thank you for your time. And if you have any questions or anything, just let me know or suggestions. Yes.
Thank you.
I do. Bullet point one, two, three, four. It says if property is historical, then it will go to the State Historical Commission for approval on repair project request and environmental review will be done. What was the age of that property again?
It's 45 years or older.
Okay, that's everything from Braille to the river. So now that's going to take more time. Am I the only one seeing this here?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that. Well, and specifically, an environmental review will be done. If I was, well, I'll bite my tongue. I would not apply for this.
The reason I'm asking that is, is before it was.
Environmental review could expose.
You need help painting and scraping your house or you're going to put new windows in. So they're going to offer you $5,000 if you qualify. That before was not in there. Now that it's in there, it's going to take even more time. And then if the state says, okay, 2903 Central is over 100 years old and we want you to maintain this historical value. And that five grand won't do much because the repair is now $20,000. So what is the wisdom of, I mean, is this a CGB requirement that you have to have this historical thing? Okay. So you know that this is now, this is red taping this and now, because I don't have to take the phone call, you do, and people are going to get pissed off. So just letting you know.
My question, will you have to match the 5,000?
No, no, this will just be, this will be given to the applicant. They don't have to pay it back.
No, match. Do they have to have $5,000 in order to get $5,000 for repairs? Did they do that last year? Didn't they, the last grant?
There was one where you got paid like a certain amount and then an additional amount once it was completed.
No, I thought that at one time you had to pay if you applied for 5,000, you had to have 5,000 to match that.
No, not with this particular one. We have with this one the 50% upfront and then 50% at the end. That way you can get the project started and then you'll get the amount, the other 50% once it's completed. But there's no match or anything for this one.
And so you want to release this tomorrow?
If City Council is okay with that, that way I can start the question process, the application. I'm anticipating that this will take some weeks so that way we can get it started. And once hopefully they're through the process, by the time the funding arrives.
Unless they have to go to the State Historic Commission. And you don't know how long they take, right?
Yeah, it will depend on when they meet. If I had to guess, I would anticipate four to six weeks, but that's just a guess right now. I know that we won't. I know that we won't get funding most likely till end of August. So I was hoping to start it weeks in advance. That way, we can kind of get this, yeah, get a jump on it and utilize as much as we can.
Is there any additional information when the, when the state says an environmental review will be done? Is there any specific inclinations on what that would entail?
That's a good question. Mainly, they are just checking the area, sort of what's going on around the area as far as industrial developments. They, the facility we actually use for this, they do our environmental, our environmental reviews on down payment assistance and others. So they're actually used to working with Middletown luckily on this. So they know how to get the process going. They have the maps from the EPA that they can look at and determine if there's going to be any issue.
Okay.
So applicant must be income qualified. What does that mean?
That means that there's an income threshold. So I've attached to the application, and I'll have them also in the city building, that you can earn above a certain amount. And it's based on individuals in the household. And it's according to CDBG's guidelines that they have for this area. And then there's going to be a form that the person will also sign off on.
Why do we make things so difficult? Especially for poor people.
Because we're using CDBG.
Right, yeah.
We gotta, we gotta comply with CD, with HUD and the CDBG.
I want to ask CDBG that question also. Why?
Is it, is it a household income cap or is it homeowner cap?
That's a good question. So on it, number of individuals in the household, as the individuals go up, it goes slightly up each time. So based on the number in the household, it does go up more.
And I had a question. We had discussed the possibility of having a list of contractors and persons, even like churches and volunteers who might want to do work, or either for free or for highly discounted rates. Do we have a list like that available for our applicants?
I had a list in round two that I can utilize and I can seek out and see if there's any individuals that would like to be a part of it for this round. And then that way, with any rejected applicants, they would also, besides Self and PWC, who we normally recommend, we can give them that list and see if they would like to reach out to them about their project. That way, it might stretch the program further because we normally have a large interest in it. And then that way, they still have a chance to get their project done.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No, I mean, I'd be fine with, yeah, go for it and then God bless your phone. It's going to be brutal.
Right, you said they can call you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else, Ms. Combs?
That's all for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. While the consent agenda is generally for consensus items, do any council members wish to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening and move it to the motion agenda? Seeing nothing, we will proceed. Mrs. Gank, please present the consent agenda.
Your consideration this evening, we have to receive and file the following board and commission minutes, the Architectural Review Board, June the 2nd, 2025, Board of Health from June the 10th, 2025, and the Planning Commission from May the 14th and June the 11th, 2025. To confirm the conditional appointments of Christopher Kline, James Moore, Kayden Vance, Bryson Bastin, and Ethan Little to the position of firefighter EMT, the Department of Public Safety, Division of Fire, and the conditional appointments of Mary Elizabeth O'Neil, Ian Bruce, and Melinda Spicer to position of event host in the Community and Economic Development Department, and to confirm the conditional appointment of Rosa Ochiya to the position of senior count clerk in the Finance Department, Division of Water Administration, and to approve the final plat for Havenwood.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. To accept the consent agenda, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slumka?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, the consent agenda is approved. Our next agenda item this evening is the motion agenda. We have two items this evening. Mrs. Gank, please present item A on the motion agenda.
To authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents with Atrium Medical Center Foundation, acknowledging the city's commitment to providing funding for a CARE Flight helicopter for a total of $450,000 to be paid as follows. $50,000 in 2025 and $100,000 in years 2026 through 2029.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, do you have anything to add?
I'm just going to summarize last time. So following a presentation by Mike Stautberg, the president of the Atrium Foundation, the city council expressed support in funding the initiative. This partnership underscores the city's dedication to public safety and regional health care. So as Amy already mentioned, the ask would be 50,000 in 2025 and 100,000 annually from '26 to '29. Total commitment, 450,000. So alternatives, council may not choose to provide the funding, but the financial impact is that the Civic Development Fund, Fund 249, will cover the funding request, which has been integrated into the financial plan. After this allocation, approximately 150,000 will remain available for future use and our charitable giving.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item A to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents with Atrium Medical Center Foundation, acknowledging the city's commitment to providing funding for a CARE Flight helicopter for a total of 450,000?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slumka?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, the motion passes. Mrs. Gank, please present item B of the motion agenda.
To enter into a three-year contract with Flock Safety for the purchase of 12 additional Flock cameras at an annual cost of 36,000 per year for a total cost of 108,000.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, a staff report, please.
The city of Middletown has received a grant for 36,000 from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for the first year. The city will be responsible for a total of 72,000 over the next two years, including annual maintenance of 36,000. The total cost for the three-year contract is 108,000. The grant will cover the first year expenses as mentioned. Opting out of the contract will mean forfeiting the use of the cameras in future years. The financial impact is no cost will be incurred the first year due to the grant. In years two and three, like I said, 36 annually, resulting in that total expenditure of that 108,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item B to enter into a three-year contract with Flock Safety for the purchase of 12 additional Flock cameras at an annual cost of 36,000 per year for a total cost of 108,000?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gank, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slumka?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, the motion passes. This concludes the motion agenda. The next item on the agenda is legislation. We have five items of legislation this evening. Law Director Mr. Alex Ewing, legislation, please.
Item number one, resolution number R 2025-22. A resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2025. General fund, second reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, do you have anything to add?
Just a reminder that this was the supplemental appropriation for the FOP contracts and the grants that were received by the Community and Economic Development Department.
Excellent, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gank, please call the roll.
Mayor Slumka?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, the motion passes. Legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number two, ordinance number O 2025-40. An ordinance authorizing a change order to the contract with NIRA paving incorporated for concrete work related to the Oakland Park renovation project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, a staff report, please.
The city contracted with NIRA for the Oakland Park renovation project at a cost of 96,520 and 23 cents. Additional work was required to remove a deeper-than-expected concrete wall along the basketball court fence. The contractor demolished the wall up to 18 inches and backfilled with gravel, costing an extra $5,755.12. We don't have any alternatives for this. The financial impact is the total project cost, including the change order, is 102,275.35. That additional cost, as mentioned, can be funded out of the Community Development Block Grant, and we have, have that funding available. So this emergency legislation is requested so that we can complete the work in time for the ribbon cutting.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gank, please call the roll.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slumka?
Yes. Yes, as have it, the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number three, ordinance number O 2025-41. An ordinance amending chapter 844, peddlers, solicitors, and vendors of the Middletown codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, a staff report, please.
Mr. Ewing is going to present this one.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, this recommendation comes from the Law Department. We were asked to review chapter 844 regarding peddlers, solicitors, and vendors. This has to do with door-to-door commercial activities. Because of the nature of the activities, it raises First Amendment concerns. And therefore, we recommend revisions to three sections of chapter 844. So here are the proposed changes, just a summary. Section 844-01, the definitions, we'd like to, we recommend adding definitions for canvassing, canvassers, canvas, youth fundraiser, and youth fundraising activity to clarify their exemption from the Middletown codified ordinances, 84402 licensing requirements. The second recommendation is with respect to section 84402, license required, feed and bond. And here are the major modifications. It would establish criteria for license application and review, clarify the approval and denial circumstances. It would set a determination timeframe, outline appeal procedures for denied applications, specifying license requirements for multiple individuals and minors, remove the $1,000 bond requirement, adding a process for license revocation in specific cases, stating that the licenses expire annually on December 31st, including those set to terminate on December 31st, 2025. These changes are intended to align the restrictions with public safety and privacy while maintaining compliance with current legal standards. The final section is section 844.03, exceptions, clarifying that canvassing and youth fundraising activities are exempt from licensing requirements. The recommendation is from the Law Department to keep all other sections of 844 unchanged and in full force of effect. And again, this is really a, you know, compliance issue with some recent case law concerning First Amendment activity. This is being presented as emergency legislation. The rationale for that request is that these changes would then take, take effect immediately to ensure the safe, private, and effective peddling, soliciting, and vending within the city.
Thank you. Anything else to add, Mrs. Combs? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance? So moved, is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
So what does this do to the circulars that are thrown in people's driveway? Does this address that? Or I'm a little bit uncertain of that.
No, no, I don't think that addresses that directly.
And the only reason why I said it, because in the past, the problem has been one of the First Amendment right. The free speech is how they were getting away with it from our past legal counsel. So I didn't know if this addressed that in any way. I didn't think, but...
No, no.
This is mainly for the people that are on central soliciting?
Yeah, yeah, this was raised primarily for any kind of door-to-door sales or solicitation.
For the people that go in neighborhoods, residential, and they, sometimes they might leave a pamphlet on your doorknob, something like that.
Yes, yes.
Or knock on your door and try to speak with you as well.
Yes, yeah. And then, and just to give a little bit of background, we received a letter from a company that engages in this business and then received a demand letter for their attorney. We looked into it and, you know, we're recommending these changes for just compliant with, because of the development of, it's been a while, I think, since the, this code has been updated, and it's really just to, to match kind of the case law that's out there.
Any other questions or comments?
I just had, and Mr. Ewing, you might be able to speak to this. I was noticing, so they can submit their application, and I was kind of curious with some of these timelines. Let me point you in the right, what section is this? So it's on the second page of, well, hold on. These aren't numbered at all. Okay, there's, there's a section in there that talks about the city manager shall approve the completed license application if, and there's a couple of different bullets listed there. And I was just curious about these timelines. So for example, it says, within the past five years, the applicant has not been convicted of, you know, a felony offense, blah, blah, blah. Part C, it says, within the past seven years, the applicant has not been convicted of a felony offense, whether in Ohio or otherwise involving violence, you know, unlawful use of force, theft, misrepresentation, fraudulent, sexual oriented offenses, things like that. What, what is, do you know why like five years and seven years seems to be the threshold? I mean...
Well, I, this is based on a, so, so this is based on a kind of overview of, you know, cases that are out there. So essentially, how, how the law develops, it's not like, the way, the way First Amendment law and constitutional law develops is that it's a case-by-case basis. So fundamentally, First Amendment issues become fundamental right issues. Generally speaking, and this is a, you know, this is kind of a broad, you know, this is, this is not, you know, this doesn't apply in every case, but generally speaking, depending on the type of speech, you want the speech to be as narrowly tailored as possible to, excuse me, the restrictions on the speech is narrowly tailored as possible. You know, there, there are different protections for different types of speech, depending on the type of forum, depending on whether it's like a time, place, and manner restriction. There are also different rules for commercial speech. So these, so to answer your question, the, these years, you know, these timeframes are based on a review of the, the current case law and an attempt to tailor our restrictions to those cases. And I'm happy to provide you and any other members of council with, you know, more detail, a more detailed analysis. But it's kind of, you know, because these are such case-by-case, excuse me, case-by-case analyses, it's kind of difficult to get into the weeds here.
I just, I just thought it was interesting that if you, you could have somebody who was convicted of a felony offense for theft, misrepresentation, fraudulent activity, nonetheless, it could be a violent offense. But if it had been longer than seven years, there's a potential they could get, I'm not saying they would get approval from the city of Middletown, but I just thought that that threshold, there must have been something that, like you said, you're, you're kind of keeping it tailored as narrow, narrowly as possible. But I, I just found that, that's one thing that just kind of stuck out my mind.
Yeah, and it really is trying to balance, you know, protecting our, protecting our citizens from, you know, unsavory characters that are, that are not having, you know, legitimate business, at the same time, you know, protecting First Amendment rights. And that's, that's really the balance we're trying to strike here.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? I had a couple. One of them was in section 84402 for the licensing, all licenses issued under this chapter expiring on December 31st. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much. The legal team did a great job with this. I was able to speak with Jack Hemmaway as well, more in depth. So I, I really do appreciate all the work that was done here. And the question I have is, thinking of this from the perspective of a business who would like to apply, I'm thinking that, could we perhaps, as council, discuss the possibility of making the, the permits available for the year from issuance instead of ending on December 31st? Because for example, a business might come in November... Because, for example, a business might come in November, and they'd have to go through the entire process again. It's a pretty, pretty big process, so I'm thinking maybe just having that conversation of a 365 turnaround instead of, like, ending in December every year, if we could amend, perhaps, the writing here. That's the conversation. Any thoughts?
Makes sense.
The license itself, though, wouldn't necessarily be held by the business, though, right? It would be by the individual, for like, door-to-door, for example?
It would be an individual.
Yeah. And is the city, I mean, is that, is that an easy fix to track it by 365 days from approval versus calendar year? Because right now, it's easy to say, December 31, all right, everybody has expired.
I think, though, we can look at that. This has been presented as an emergency ordinance, and the rationale for that is just the compliance. But if we want to take another stab at it, you know, this could be the first reading, and we could, you know, make those revisions and present them as a second reading next time.
Having spoken with Mr. Hemmenway, he did say that, that business that approached, he said he was fine with it actually taking more time, because they are now happy, I guess, with our work that we've done, because since we are in the legislation phase at this point, they know that we've taken steps to look at this ordinance. So he said he'd be fine with looking at this as a first reading or a second reading emergency, depending on when we might want to get this complete. But that would give us a little bit more time to kind of look at all of this, and also have residents also chime in if they wish to. If we wanted to make this a first reading or a second reading emergency, we'd need a motion, I believe, at this point.
Yes, I would recommend that.
Well, I'd be okay with, you know, voting on this tonight. I just, my question was, is it, is the city comfortable with, you know, starting to track these from the application date to one year out versus...
Yeah, and, well, yeah, I think that's more of an administrative question, but...
Yeah, more for...
Yes, I mean, and Jack said that we may do so. Yeah, we could do that.
So do we have to go ahead and vote as a council to make that change? Is that something, necessarily, we just say that for you? So that, when we vote, if we are going to vote tonight, if we're not making this a second reading emergency or first reading, then that implied that that change will be made?
Yes, that's, I think we want to move for that, though.
Make a motion, okay. So I move to change the wording of 844.02. Looks like, is that Section 4? About the calendar year from expiring December 31 to some kind of wording about 365 days from the issuance of the permit.
Yes, and it's actually C4.
C4, thank you. C4, under 844-02. So I moved, is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about that change? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
So right now, we're, just so we're clear, we're voting on the change.
Correct.
Okay. Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slumka?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and that motion passes. Thank you very much. And so at this point, is there any further discussion, any discussion about wanting to make this a first reading or second reading emergency? In that case, we can proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
So now we're voting on the ordinance itself. Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slumka?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number four, ordinance number O-2025-42. An ordinance denying a request to change the zoning classification for a, excuse me, 10.73, excuse me, 10.793 acre parcel known as parcel number Q654209400008, located on Hendrickson Road from I-1 Industrial Park District to PD Plan Development District, and not approving a preliminary development plan for construction of a 124-unit assisted living facility and a 144-unit multifamily apartment complex. First reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, a staff report, please.
I have nothing further to add from the staff presentation.
Thank you. As this is a first reading, there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, we will proceed. Mr. Ewing, the last legislative item, please.
Item number five, resolution number R-2025-23. A resolution authorizing the city of Middletown's participation in the national opioid settlement involving Purdue Pharma LP and the Sackler family and declaring an emergency. No action requested until August 5, 2025.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, a staff report, please.
Middletown is part of a One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding for Distributing Opioid Settlement Funds. Purdue Pharma LP and Sackler Family have proposed a settlement that requires the city to opt in. The total settlement amount is $7.4 billion, up to $198 million for Ohio and local governments for the Ohio, One Ohio MOU. The payment period would be over 15 years. The exact amount the city will receive is currently unknown. The city council can choose not to participate, which would make the city ineligible for this funding.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. As this is a second reading emergency, there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, that concludes the legislation for the evening. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Do any council members have anything they would like to bring up under unfinished business?
I do.
Mr. Horn?
Mr. Law Director, I'd like an update on the SORG, please.
Yes, so following the last meeting, the council had voiced its strong support for the bridge agreement for the SORG grant funding for their projects and repairs. We are, we are very close to drafting documentation, you know, specifically including an agreement, promissory note, just to provide some structure to that agreement, and are reaching out to the SORG Foundation. So our plan is to have documents not closed upon, but to be ready for review at the next council meeting.
Well, to help it move it on forward, if we do a motion tonight, just to tell you to proceed?
Yes, I think that's fine, yes.
Mayor, I'd like to propose a motion that we continue to have legal proceed forward with helping the SORG with their documentation and contract and a line of credit to help them to continue to be an active historical building and help our citizens.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slumka?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and the motion passes. Is there any other unfinished business that council members would like to bring up at this time? Hearing none, we will proceed. The next item on the agenda is new business. Is there any new business from any of the council members this evening?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
City Manager Combs, I'd like to request a survey from August to September for a specific sample of just the Manchester and the Sunny Building, which is connected to that property. The reason why I ask that is to get a survey from our citizens, and it's not a deciding factor, it's just more data to help out, to help everyone involved see what our citizens are saying. Is, I'm getting mixed reviews. When I talk to people from the SORG Society, they want to save it. When I talk to people who are younger, from last generation, or people who have never been in the Manchester, they're saying they would prefer demolition and redevelopment. So I'm confused. So, but I think instead of putting the whole refresh in there, or all the other buildings, because as I have said, some of the other buildings I plan to propose that we save, I think a specific sample on a survey that just calls out just the Manchester and the property therein would help us with the data when we make our, have our, what is that, town hall in September or October. Thank you.
Any other new business?
Only question is, how do you control a survey like that? Because surveys we've had in the past, people, I know somebody who took one of ours 200 times themselves. So if there's some way we can control that, okay. I just don't know if a general survey like that is really going to be useful. I fully agree with you and understand what you're saying, but how can it be done where it's quantified as giving us good direction?
Let me, let me help out. So, three questions, okay? Question one, do you want to save the SORG, or save the SORG, I want to save the SORG. You want to save the Manchester? If it's yes, what do you want to do with it? If question one is no, then it goes immediately to question three, what do you want to do with the Manchester if you knock it down? So then, if someone wants to load it up with 200 yeses, 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 then they have to answer question two of, okay, what are you going to do? Not just say, "I want to save it because I had my prom there." They have to give a type specifically, I'm not trying, man, I'm not trying to be, you know, me.
No, I get it.
But I'm just saying, when I talk to some people, especially younger folks who are on our boards and who are people who live here, some of them have never been in the Manchester, or ever will be. Some of them kind of remember it, so that's my point. Have those three questions, but if we make that sample type specifically, I know what you're saying, Paul. Someone could stand there because they have nothing else to do, because they came off midnights and they just want to load up their computer on their own IP address and answer the same question 500 times. But at least with those three questions, then you're getting some bit of a sample of, "I want to save the Manchester, and this is why," or, "I want to knock down the Manchester, and this is what I want to do, and this is why." And this is just data. This is not a, going to be, this is not going to be the ultimate deciding factor, but when I'm hearing two different things, and these are citizens, these are people who live here who are participating in this process and this process, I think we just at least give a 30-day survey and then see where the chips fall. And if they all fall on, you know, 100%, save the Manchester, at least we'll have, what do you want to do with it? Not just, "Save it because I said so."
And to Mr. Lolly's point, is there a way? Just curious about, like, maybe an IP address?
Yeah, I was going to talk to information systems and see what safeguards we could try to implement.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
I have one regarding, right there on Verity Parkway and Lafayette is a gateway on Route 4, and I'm wondering if we could get the, that building that's sitting in Douglas Park, the restroom, used to be the swimming, where you would go in and pay for your swimming for the day. If we could get that painted, if it's something that we can't do as the city, maybe the community could paint it. But when you drive up Verity Parkway and you see that building, it's a mess. So, and I also want to know, who is it that cleans the bathroom there?
He said Public Works.
Scott said Public Works does that.
Cleans the bathroom, okay. So who would I contact? I plan to go back there tomorrow to find out if the toilets are fixed.
Mr. Scott Tadic will come down to the podium as a director of Public Works.
Yeah, so parks' maintenance staff opens and closes the bathrooms at Douglas Park on a daily basis. Same with Smith Park.
Well, the last time I was in there, the Arnold was full.
Okay.
And so, I'll check tomorrow and see if...
I will admit, they do get a lot of vandalism in those bathrooms, but...
The bathrooms are in great shape.
Okay.
It was the Arnold, that was the only thing.
They even had toilet paper in there. Okay.
So...
We can have building maintenance check it out, too, because that's really, they would, if it's a plumbing issue, they would go down there versus...
Right, right, right. And what about painting the building?
Yeah, we can look into that. I don't know the cost or the, but I'm sure that can be done. I just, I'd need to look at it a little closer, so, but we can, we can follow up with you on that.
Maybe we can paint it purple, since that's our middies color.
Maybe.
Yeah. And if...
That might match the, I'd have to, I can't remember what the colors are for the splash pad, but I'll have to...
They have, they have variety.
Purple, yellow, green? Yeah, I'm trying to think. I need to go back and look, but we can maybe look at, making sure it sort of matches. So, yeah, we can definitely look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other unfinished, or, I'm sorry, new business at this time? Okay. Seeing none, that concludes new business for the evening. The next item on the agenda is executive session. Do I hear a motion to move to executive session under the authority of ORC 121.22G1 to consider the employment, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee?
Motion.
Is there a second?